Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Public Meeting, Monday, November 23, 2015. The time is now 8:05. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the October 29, 2015 issues of the Nutley Sun. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Petracco?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Move on to minutes, please.
Yes, we have October 16, 2015, special meeting minutes; October 20, 2015, regular meeting minutes; and October 27, 2015, special meeting minutes.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye. Also, we're going to skip one thing. We're going to move to the bills next, please.
Yes, Mayor. Public Affairs, $315,350. Revenue and Finance, $5,648,033.58. Public Safety, $462,752.28. Public Works, $656,098.86. Parks and Public Property, $151,119.54. Total Payroll, $776,345.33 for a grand total of $8,789,816.24.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Before, Commissioner Rogers, we're going to take his proclamations for these Eagle Scouts that are here and thank you for waiting patiently. I would just like everyone in attendance tonight to have a moment of silence for what happened in Paris and just a moment of silence for our troops that are serving overseas. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Rogers, before you read your proclamations to these honorable Eagle Scouts that we have here this evening, I just wanted to congratulate you and say a few words about Commissioner Rogers. Last week, we had Veterans Day, and I have to tell you, I attended the school one at the high school and all of us were at Vincent Methodist Church. And I have to tell you, Commissioner, you did a stellar job. It really, really made me feel patriotic that day, and I know all the veterans thank you, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank this Board of Commissioners because this entire board did something very extraordinary, and I've said it all over the place. May of 2012, they established the first Military and Veterans Affairs Bureau on a local state of New Jersey. They ordered it fully. I mean, if a veteran needs something, Mayor, you know this, you and Commissioner Tucci, Commissioner Evans, and Commissioner Scarpelli, they're disabled or not. When they need something and I can't provide it, all I got to do is pick up the phone. Our fellows are right there, ready, willing, and able to help them. So it's a team effort, but I thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ready?
We're ready.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to present proclamations to two Boy Scouts who became Eagle Scouts. I want you to know also that these proclamations are really from the entire Board of Commissioners because the Board of Commissioners scouting in word, but indeed, and again, I mentioned veterans about phone calls, you can't. Gentlemen have done to advance scouting in this town. So it's in that spirit that I... First, can we have Liam Sweeney come forward to the mic? Liam, whereas Nutley resident Liam Sweeney is currently a member of BSA Troop 22, and whereas in an effort to attain Eagle Scout status, Liam has completed his project at Camp Glen Gray in Mawha, where he installed a large cabin deck and removed boulders from the trail in front of the cabin, creating easier and safer access to the cabin. And whereas Liam is an active volunteer with the Nutley Emergency Rescue Squad and is currently taking his EMT training, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, join Liam Sweeney's family and friends in recognizing and congratulating him on receiving Eagle Scout status with BSA Troop 22. I congratulate you, and I know my colleagues are sure going to want to say something.
Liam, congratulations. It's always amazing what these Eagle Scouts do, and should your family, I know, is proud of you, and we're proud of you, and the township's proud.
Congratulations. I frequently say this about scouting, and especially at the Eagle level. It's only 2% of scouts actually achieve that level. It's something that is recognized at the university level when you're making applications. It makes you stand apart about leadership. And so since you've put yourself on that path, I encourage you to continue to develop your leadership ability. Seek out opportunities where you're successful in your own career, but wherever you go, whatever community you contribute, congratulations. It's a...
Commissioner Tucci?
I'll keep my remarks brief because we're down the line, there's not a lot left to say. But I do want to congratulate you. I know I've just been given this speech a long time. It's a monumental feat, all right, becoming an Eagle Scout, and the qualities that are necessary to attain such a level, all right, are pretty much second to none. So what you've accomplished so far is the beginning of something fantastic. I know you're just going to continue to excel, and we're just proud, and I personally am proud to be able to sit here and congratulate you on everything. Keep up the good work and keep moving forward.
Okay. Fifth, not easy, right? First of all, smile. You did a great job. That's number one. And where are your parents tonight? Let's give the parents a round of applause. I have to say, having three boys that never made it out of Cub Scouts, I can't imagine how to be a parent and get an Eagle Scout out of them. So I know the parents always have a lot to do with it, congratulating so much, always making our township proud. All of our commissioners recognize how hard it is to become an Eagle Scout and all the volunteer work that it takes. Would you like to say a few words to the board tonight?
I'd like to thank the whole board, especially Commissioner Rogers, for a proclamation according to scouting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Liam, don't go anywhere. Matthew? Gregory, Gregory, Matthew, I'm sorry. Gregory, the Township of Nutley Board of Commissioners, why issues this proclamation? Whereas Nutley resident Gregory Matthew Kuklin, currently a member of BSA Troop 22, and whereas in an effort to attain Eagle Scout status, Gregory has completed his project at Brookdale Reform Church in Montclair, in which he cleaned up the church cemetery and installed landscaping on the property. Whereas Gregory is an active volunteer with the Nutley Emergency Rescue Squad, is currently taking his EMT training, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, join Gregory Matthew Kuklin's family and friends in recognizing and congratulating him on receiving Eagle Scout status within BSA Troop 22. Gregory, you and Liam, I always say this is another reason why Nutley, New Jersey is one of the greatest places to live. And Mayor, as I'm reading this, I'm thinking, hey, great to have young people in the EMT, I mean, at this age. That's really great.
Absolutely.
Well, I'll hand it off to my colleagues. I'm sure they're going to want to...
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Gregory, congratulations again. We're very proud of you. Your family should be proud of you. And like I said, I'm always amazed at the work that goes into becoming an Eagle Scout, and you guys are a credit to this town.
Greg, I'll go, congratulations again. I'll echo my comments. You're part of a very elite group. I encourage you to be, yeah, your success in...
Commissioner Tucci?
Well, like your counterparts standing next to you, congratulations are in order. Again, it's a great feat. You've accomplished much to this point. I'm sure you have a long way to go, and there are many other great things that you're going to accomplish. And the mayor was correct in thanking the families, the parents, because the examples are set at the home, all right? You're taught in school, but everything's reinforced back home. So to the parents, to you gentlemen, congratulations, and again, keep moving forward.
Gregory, where's your parents tonight? Wow, you took your father's head right off them, didn't you? I kind of figured that. Let's give the parents another round of applause. Thank you for coming. Like Commissioner Tucci said, it starts at home, and we're blessed in Nutley to have so many strong families and a good foundation that starts there. So congratulations to you as well. And I believe we're going to take a little picture now, Commissioner Rogers? break. If any of the ladies and gentlemen here for the Eagle Scouts would like to leave, you're more than welcome to stay for our meeting. But if you were going to get up and leave, this would be the time to do that. Thank you so much, guys. We had a couple of our commissioners that needed to use the boys' room, so we're waiting Okay, now, we are going to move on to ordinance introductions. Before I introduce ordinance number 3326, counsel, would you just give a brief description exactly what this ordinance is? Counsel?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The first ordinance for introduction, 3326, is an ordinance to enter into a contract to purchase what's known as 537 Franklin Avenue, Block 3100, lots 28, 29, and 30, commonly known as the Chickolini Property. This is the first reading of this ordinance, and his ordinance is for a purchase price of $325,000. Commissioner Evans, I believe, will get into the ordinance regarding the bonding of those going with, I know, the other public hearing we're having tonight. So that, this is the ordinance for introduction for tonight, the public hearing, at which point your hearing and public comment will be...
Thank you. This is ordinance number 3326, an ordinance of the Township of Nutley County, Vesta, State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of land known as 537 Franklin Avenue and also known as Block 3100, lots 28, 29, 30 pursuant to local land and buildings law. I move that this ordinance be passed through a second reading advertising the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by the law and the further consideration of said ordinance. For final passage, for the Board of Commissioners, to be held at its second reading on December 15, 2015, I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Thank you, counsel. Okay, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have ordinance introductions 3331 and 3332. Both of these ordinances authorize the issuance of debt to support the purchase of both the, what's commonly known as the Davis Property on Franklin Avenue, as well as the Chickolini Property on Franklin Avenue. The underlying premise of the debt is that it will not increase our debt service over the future, so our debt service will remain flat, primarily driven by the favorable interest rates and the terms of the notes. In any municipal environment, you have what you call your capital budget, and then you have operating budget, and you also have what you call your debt, how much money you can borrow. For Nutley, the municipal debt limit is actually $130 million. Our current debt outstanding is roughly around $10, $11 million. And with the addition of this debt, it would ultimately increase that potential if it was flat to about $17 million, or about 13%, what are authorized. That would be the worst case. Given the nature of the way debt works and the payments against that over time, it won't reset that 13%, but it's well below the municipalities' in terms of their debt service. What I also wanted to add is, so to that point, is understanding what we're allowed to borrow and what we have outstanding. How does that affect our ability to support our capital and needs for the town? So this is the normal every-year capital for road improvements, for building support and things like that. How does it affect that? And at the end of the day, how does it actually affect the operating budget, which that particular budget directly affects our property taxes? With the nature of these, the addition of this debt and the timing of when debt terminates on our books, this will not cause us, and I repeat, not cause us to have an increase in our operating budget for debt service that will remain. It's not an increase in spending, it's maintaining our spending level, and that's the opportunity that we have today, primarily driven by the fact that historical interest rates are at very low levels of borrowing today. Also supported by the fact is that the municipality, given what we've been managing, has been able to maintain, and earlier, a few years earlier, it was actually an increase, our bond rating, which lowered our cost to borrow. So we get better interest rates because of the fact that our bond rating is double A2 on a standard scale, which for municipalities is a very favorable bond rating. So that's a technical side of that, but the simple fact is it does not affect our debt service. I've asked Ray Serenelli to be here tonight. He is our outside auditor, and we use these in great detail. And before we proceed, I'd like to have Ray come up and comment. Ray Serenelli, Township Auditor. Commissioner Evans contacted me a couple months back relative to this potential acquisition that the rest in two properties. And, you know, we discussed the current debt service in the budget, which is $2,225,000 each year. The way Nutley has structured the service past, try and phase in new debt as old debt starts to get paid off. So about every three to five years, there's a drop-off in debt, and then new debt replaces that. And the intention is not have any big increase in debt service costs, which would affect your tax rate. So he asked, given the current circumstance of what our existing debt service is for already existing bond sales, plus the debt that had been authorized through January 1, 2015, new debt authorized previous to these, plus this ordinance, could we put that in a package and still allow the 1.5 million capital projects that are authorized to continue the next 10 years or so? So we prepared, I prepared some calculations based on conservative estimates of what note and bond interest rate, and prepared a schedule, which all the commissioners have, that demonstrate that these ordinances added to the existing, the existing capital projects that have already been authorized, along with the existing debt service, could be put in a structure that would cause the debt service to be $2,250,000 or less for the next 10 years or so. And you have that schedule, and it does demonstrate that if you stay with this schedule, that service would actually slightly have a slight increase, but it's always around that $2,250, so no real impact on the budget. The interest rates that were used for these calculations were much higher than the current interest rate, just to be conservative. The current rate for bonding is about, and, calculation, just in case there is a change. So you have this schedule, if there's any questions about it, but I think it's pretty clear, given the current market condition, this in your capital program, still be able to maintain.
And it wouldn't relate it to any type of tax rate or tax at now?
This would not have any increase, would have no impact, might be, in fact, just slightly lower debt service.
Questions, commissioners? Thank you, Ray.
So just to add, when you get into talking about bond rates and interest rates, and it can get complicated, in the simplest sense today, Nutley's outstanding debt at the municipal level is roughly $11 million, change. It's on average nine to 10 years, and the average interest rate associated with that is 2.67%. So if you put that in terms of a mortgage, we have a 10-year mortgage at $11 million, 2.67%. Simplest way to explain, if you've purchased a house, you've financed a car, those are things that I think it relates to same level of how you would think about that. We think about it the same way. It's also, as we discussed, for, you know, for the last 10 years, we've been actively managing our debt service. We've been actively managing our budget and our operating budget so that when we're in a position where we need to act, we're able to do that. To a question that was raised earlier, just as a point of clarification, you know, are we paying too much? Why these amounts? How did they come about, right? Said we did this, right? Tax assessed value is lower. These are all the questions that have come up. The important part around that is, before we agree to a purchase price, everybody has a desire to sell property for what they would like to sell it for. The municipality is guided by what's the fair value appraisal, and it must be independently appraised in order for us to determine what our ability is to participate in any purchased transaction. So for both of these properties, we have obtained independent appraisals. At the request of Commissioner Tucci, as we were going through that negotiation, we had individuals, two separate individuals for each transaction, review the appraisals and make sure that they did a review to say, is this right? Is this another person's opinion? Is this a fair appraisal? And we went through that step, and we received favorable reviews based upon the independent review of the appraiser. The appraiser that we used is highly competent, highly experienced in looking at commercial property. So it wasn't our tax assessor, it wasn't the commissioners that looked at this, it was we hired an independent appraiser to do the evaluation. The other question that was raised is that there was an earlier appraisal on the Davis Property, which we'll talk about earlier, and that we went through a process to evaluate why that appraisal was initially lower and whether or not appropriate for this transaction. And we did resolve that. So we did, as a Board of Commissioners, kick the tires and do the tests to make sure that the prices that we are paying are fair in relation to the value that's associated with these properties. Another point that I think is important is to recognize is that in both cases, these properties were up for sale and were close to being sold. So if we were to be in a situation where we were going to have an opportunity to create an affordable solution to expand our schools, we needed to act. Same thing occurs with the Chickolini Property. It was up for sale, it was about to be sold, and if we were to address, from a municipal standpoint, how do we address municipal parking and create opportunity, we, and we didn't act, these would then be purchased by private buyers who would then use the property. And really, Chickolini's property is suited for 70 to 80 apartments, which would then be built on Franklin Avenue, it would cover all of the existing land there, and the surrounding businesses would not be able to avail themselves of any parking in that area, which would mean for them to be successful, their parking would encroach on residential neighborhoods. It made sense for us to step in and act, especially when the environment we're in, where interest rates are so favorable. So it's an opportunity for us to address the needs of the municipality, support and show cooperation and support with the school as they evaluate what they need to do so that we can move forward. The last question that was raised quite a bit was, how come the purchase prices then are different from what the assessed values are? And the use of assessed value on commercial property in relation to what it should be sold for is an irrelevant comparison. The assessed value is determined by state statute, case law, and regulations about how you fairly distribute tax across businesses, not what those businesses should be sold for in a fair market environment. Further, Nutley was subject to a revaluation in the year 2005 and also by state constitutional law. The base year for Nutley is 2005, so once that work is done, it's adjusted to be within the sort of timeframe of 2005, not 2015. So there are very technical parameters that go into determining how you calculate tax assessable value versus the market value of a piece of property which would be achieved during a fair and open sale process. So they're very different, they aren't comparable, and they shouldn't be compared for this purpose. With that, by title, I'll read the ordinance introduction. Before I do that, commissioners, any...
I'd like to make a comment. So for all of the above reasons that Commissioner Evans has just stated, because of our excellent bond rating, because of our low amount of debt that we carry, because of the availability of the properties, the two properties in question, and because of our needs, both from an educational perspective and the possibilities that acquisition of the Davis Property first presents to us, and who knows, there may even be some others in the future, all right, so that we not only accommodate what our needs are today, but also moving forward in the future, so we never run into a space problem that we're experiencing right now and we hinder the educational process of our children, which there's probably nothing more important than. As far as the Chickolini Property is concerned, we have an opportunity to enhance our business district and provide... district and provide the necessary parking that's been absent for so many years. Ultimately, what the disposition of the entire property will be is undetermined, all right? But unless we control the property, and unless we can do the necessary planning and have the foresight and the expertise of our professionals, all right, we're never going to move this township forward. So these are not decisions that we as a board take lightly, and I'll take that liberty of speaking for the entire board, these are bold moves. But again, because of the climate that we're in, because of the interest rates, because of our bond rating, all right, and because of our latitude in how much we can bond, we're still at a very, very low percentage of debt for this township. Not to act would be a remission of our responsibilities.
Absolutely. So and just to add, Commissioner Tucci, I think that was very well said, two other things I think are important. One is, on the Davis property, and I know we're getting to Davis property before we get to the Davis property, but the Davis property, that building is currently occupied with tenants and a business that's operating. Those tenants will continue to stay there, the business will continue to operate, and we will be collecting those rents. So it's not that it will become an idle piece of property, we will be collecting the revenue flow attached to those properties. Until such time is a determination is made through the plans with the school that something needs to be done with that property. The second piece, which is, Maro, you alluded to, is the Chickalini's is actually a two-step purchase. Township has a primary need for that property to create parking. We don't want to lose the retail space, but we have the opportunity, through redevelopment planning and declaring it, or revitalization planning, that we as a municipality can decide what's the right redevelopment of that particular piece of property. So it could be a continuation of the retail, maybe a different form of retail, or repurposing of that site with a mixed use that's attached to it, so some apartments that are there attached to it, that could be an outcome. But we would do the work to determine what is the highest and best use of that property. If we don't act, then we are subject to the fact that somebody else comes in to purchase it for $3.5 million and basically says, I need to build 70, 80 apartments here in order for the, to make the economics work. We do not want to be subject to that. So it's an opportunity for us to take control of the situation and actually do look at the future in a way, addresses our municipal needs, but also gives us the opportunity to take the building piece and flip that in a secondary transaction for a use that best fits with the town. So it just gives us a lot of great opportunity.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner Scarpelli?
I'd just like to add what Commissioner Evans said, is that they could build those 70 or 80 apartments without a variance.
That's correct.
It's an approved use. So this is an example of this government and this governing body being proactive and planning for the future, similar to those in the past who bought the property behind where Ginger is, where we have parking lot two, that over time acquired that property and put a parking lot there, would help that part of the business district. This will help with our northern end, providing not needed parking, parking that has been utilized by some of the businesses in the past, that if it was acquired, it would go away. So we don't, as Commissioner Tucci said, it's a bold move, and sometimes you have to not stick your finger in the air, see which way the wind is blowing, sometimes you have to act, sometimes you have to show leadership, and I think that's what this board is doing.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
I'd like to state that I support it 100%, it's a very prudent idea, and now's the time, as you said, now this time to do it.
I'd just like to add that I think that, like Commissioner Scarpelli just said, it's, we were to lose that parking down there, it could be devastating to all those businesses that are there. So I think that when these properties present themselves, we have to do what's right for the township. I know we could go back and forth with the price and debate that, but I think that by using our professionals and Commissioner Evans, how many appraisals did we have on that building? I'm sorry, how many appraisals did we have on the building? On the building, the Chickalini building? I know we had an appraisal done, and also appraisal done, and we also had an independent review.
An independent review. And I'd just like to add one other comment also. You know, it's, you know, we get a lot of opinions up here all the time, and sometimes they're painful, but I'd just like to say that 100 years ago, when we were, when our forefathers were here putting this park system in that we all love in this town, I'm sure that they got some, you know, negative feedback of that, and why, and how come, and all that stuff. So, you know, hopefully 50 years from now, people will be saying, thank God that we made these actions, and we still have the Nutley that we know and love to walk through our parks and to support our businesses on Franklin Avenue. Thank you, Commissioner.
So with that, I will read the ordinances by title. Boden Ordinance 3331, providing for the acquisition of lands in and by the township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $900,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $855,900 in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the cost thereof. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 15th, 2015, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Bond Ordinance 3332, providing for the acquisition of lands in and by the township of Nutley in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, appropriating 3.5 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,333,000 in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the cost thereof. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 15th, 2015, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
My next public introduction. This is an ordinance that will eliminate parking at an undersized curb line on Franklin Avenue down by Harrison Street. An ordinance to amend the ordinance codified in the Code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article II, Section 10, entitled Stopping or Standing Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Streets, to add the location set forth herein, which is Franklin Avenue, just north of Harrison Street. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 15th, 2015, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, this is actually an ordinance where we're selling a piece of property, not buying a piece of property. These are, we have several landlocked strips of property throughout the township that we presently own and we presently maintain, and by law, we're able to offer them to adjacent property owners, which enhances the size of their properties, while at the same time relieving the township of the burden of maintaining them and trying to find a use for these small strips. So this is an ordinance authorizing the sale of property designated as Block 7801, Lot 26, on the tax map of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on December 15th. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
That's all I have for now, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move into our public hearing on ordinance number 3325. Counsel, I see that our superintendent of schools are here, Russ Lazovic, and thank you so much for coming, Russ. Would it be okay if he came up to the mic and just gave us a little synopsis of what's going on at the schools and why we need some more space?
Yes, Mayor, your invitation.
Thank you.
This is my second meeting of the night, having us. I did want to say thank you again for your cooperation. I'm here on behalf of you, the board, Mr. Kozinski, but all nine members, appreciative of the cooperation that the five of you have shown throughout this process. As you know, we have a space issue, appraiser is secret at this point. Specifically at the elementary level, our K6 buildings are beyond capacity. With your cooperation, we've hired a demographer, we had our engineer in as well, trying to find the most, the most fiscally responsible and efficient way of solving this issue, in line with what is education sound. We want to make sure that we're on the rich tradition that Nutley had. Because of that, we're looking to bring out of the elementary schools, middle school, for multiple reasons. The first is, it's the most efficient way to alleviate space in five buildings, drawing grades out of classes out of all five of them at once. More importantly though, it's moving to a more sound, more academically proven model, where students actually receive higher levels of academic instruction by content, playing, ended our strategic ground, and that other districts are moving their kids that model much earlier than we are. Our state data for decades at this point has shown that the dip in our performance that's expected at the middle level happens a year later, never fully recover. So if you combine both our facilities and issues with this demonstrated academic need, that for once, both problems kind of solve themselves together. That we needed your help, and the district was prepared and determined to move forward, but we did reach out, and based on that, I want to thank you for offering to obtain the property necessary for the future, forward, in a more fiscally responsible, less burden some way to the taxpayers. End of the day, we both draw from the same source. There are ways that we can work together to do that more responsibly and more economically, such as this, it certainly, taxpayers understand. At this point in time, planning wise, we shared plans with the commissioners a number of years back, those plans have been significantly modified. It's interesting to hear you address the Chickalini need in parking as an issue, because the number one thing after our academic piece happens to be parking. We're not creating a parking lot, we will be planning to expand the middle school onto that property, but in order to do that in a way that, number one, maximizes the space at the least cost, does it in a way that's in line with code, with safety requirements, ensures that we have the highest level academic space created. We absolutely do need that property. So I appreciate the fact that, again, working on a tempo, the five of you, something that the district actually is determined to do and that we absolutely do need. We're prepared for public presentations on this, what we're looking for at the middle school, we have been wrapping that together with kind of what we're calling a one Nutley Public Schools Plan, looking at all of the needs together. There still are remaining questions of the high school, but this purchase of this property for this use, partnership with Nutley Public School Board, Board of Commissioners, great things, as you talked about, 50 years from now. The district has always been one of the jewels of this township, and we want to make sure that the next chapter is just as bright, all the work that you've been doing.
Russ Lazovic, before we let you go home on another late night, can you just explain to everyone of what's driving, you know, the space issues as far as when we met, as far as the special ed, because I am a graduate, a proud graduate of the class of 1983, and I know our class sizes were much bigger?
Yes.
Then, as we discussed, so just to get into a little bit of how the footprint has shrunk, and the reasons why.
There are a number of issues that people try and pin on one versus the other, but generally speaking, or specific, and to kind of lay them all out generally, the first is that requirements have changed over time since you or I were in school, and how we're allowed to use the space is different now by state law. We cannot put the same number of students into the same rooms as they were. As school districts, as school buildings age, they get smaller, even though physically they don't change size, happens. Second piece is our special services. One of the most significant pieces of public education, you know, has been to support students with special needs. Fantastic thing, it's one of the things that makes this country unique when it comes to public education, but in order to do that, it takes more resources and more, it has altered our budget as a school district, and has altered the way we use space. We had classrooms where you'd have 25 or 30 students in a classroom, now you can have nine or 11. And we need two or three classrooms just to support the same number of students where we could have had in one. But that has changed as well. On top of it, the academic program has changed. We offer more to students at every level, specialized instruction in small groups, as well as technology in radically different math and language arts. We have a rich program that goes beyond with music, art, and everything, you need space to do that. Right now, we have a number of our elementary buildings sharing those rooms, which is not ideal, especially when you want kids to be able to work and create that work and leave it there and come back the next day, those things aren't happening. So that has happened as well. On top of the fact that when we had a demographer in, you referred to a time when the district had larger class sizes. Based on the way the town was laid out in 1983?
Yes.
Those houses could produce a certain number of school-aged children. Township has changed dramatically since then. We have fewer kids than we did then, and more space issues, number one, because of the changes I've mentioned. My concern moving forward is that we know, just based on experience, that the existing, in 1983, the existing layout of the town could produce more school-aged students than we have now. Since that time, the town has changed, and there are more residences from which we can receive school-aged students. But if you couple the two of them together, there's every possibility, for the demographer, that we could have gradually at more time, which we're showing at the elementary levels, year after year, not just two or three sections of kindergarten, but four and sometimes five sections of kindergarten, and it hasn't proven to be a bubble at this point, we've maintained that for four years in a row, unheard of in, if you look at our past demographic. So those pieces certainly have added as well. There, the other big piece at the elementary level specifically, I think, was a decision by the board, which academically unquestionably the right decision, but you have to take into consider budget and space, was moving from half-day to full-day kindergarten. So the same age, same number of kindergarten-age students would take up twice as many rooms now, because we're servicing them through the entire day. I will say that feedback from the Nutley teachers who have been here through that change, first grade teachers specifically, they noticed a dramatic difference, difference of the preparedness, and it may sound silly, but of kindergartners who are aging up into first grade, and it makes a difference. I'm happy to report that we've been hopefully transparent in our student performance data. The state released the first round of elementary park data this morning. I immediately turned it over and presented the initial findings to the Board of Education across the street this evening. We're having a parent academy, we've invited the entire community to hear that data more specifically tomorrow night at the high school, 7 o'clock, in Room 100. Just to touch base on that, if you look at our scores, everyone, entire state, as we've moved from the Ask and the Hespa Park, proficiency levels have gone down because it's a more rigorous test across the board. My larger concern though was, we've had two decades of data showing where our students perform against the other students in the state. So I was less concerned about initial proficiency scores as to how our proficiency scores with everyone else across the state. Good news is, at the elementary levels, we far outperformed in the past 10 years, far as student performance, when you look in English.
Great deal.
So the academic program changes, and the work that our teachers on the ground are doing, getting our parents involved in the strategic plan, and the decisions we've sort of made to direct finances into the classroom, I'm hopeful of showing impact. And again, we have four consecutive years at this point of increased advanced placement participation at the high school level, and increased scores on those assessments, and now we're showing the flip. You have a more rigorous test, and the entire state moved down proficiency-wise, but where we were at average or below average, we were significantly improved for the first time. So I'm hopeful that on the academic side, we're moving forward, but then continuing to working with you, make sure that the facilities, the kinds of education, we provide an educational environment that's not just can hold our students, but provide the kind of environment our students are going to thrive in.
That news is wonderful to hear, we really appreciate you coming out this evening and explaining all those stories.
Thank you for having me, and again, the board.
May I? First off, for us, thanks for sharing that news, it's actually, it's great to hear, which means the academic changes that you made and the rigor that you've been putting into the system is actually starting to pay some dividends, it's really great to hear that. Just for me, because I've been quoted as commenting on what's driving the need for changes in our facilities, and I've summarized it in a sort of, a sort of a very brief, maybe more cryptic way than you just walked us through, but I want to make sure it's fair and accurate, because I don't want to misquote.
21st century educate, 20th century building?
Yeah, that's the sort of, it gets that cryptic, 21st century educational needs based on 20th century infrastructure. But the essence of that means that even if, even if we were to take the current volume levels of school, add to it the projected volume levels of schools, that would be less than the volumes that we had when I was in school and when Al was.
Correct.
So one would think on a volume basis... So one would think on a volume basis, what's the issue, right? And that's, volume is not the issue. In, in the, in the reality of where we are today, volume is an issue, but the reality of by comparing it against history, it's just not an issue, right? That's what I've explained. The drivers for me, Ben, there's a decision that says we've absorbed space differently we're using today. Full-day kindergarten uses more space today than it used to because it was a half a day. We've had changes in classroom size requirements. Larger classroom size, I had some where I was in classes, there were 30 students in the class when I was in, when I was in high school. Today, we're ideally looking to be somewhere around 18 students.
Elementary, yes.
Right, right, elementary class, right, exactly. And so therefore, fewer, same, same number of classrooms, but fewer children in those, occupying those classrooms. The addition of the special ed requirements that says, oh, I have a very small classroom size here, less than 10, somewhere around eight, plus the support space that goes around that to do that, all utilizing that 20th century infrastructure, you know, basically to its maximum. In fact, we've now exceeded the maximum use of that space, and therefore, we have to look for a change. The last thing that I've said is, based upon academic changes and how our children are challenged and need to be challenged, you have educated me well on the importance of teachers being certified in their subject matter, and that you, it's hard to press a sixth-grade teacher to be knowledgeable across four certification levels and have that children, that child achieve that level of academic need that's required in order for them to compete. By moving to the middle school concept, we have a greater ability to provide a better academic experience for them.
Exactly.
That's what I've said. That, it's good?
I hope that's what I conveyed just before, but the idea that, yes, 21st century education, 20th and 20th century infrastructure, and it's, we want to make sure that our students have every possible drive.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I'm just very happy to hear that we're progressing and we continue to move forward. I mean, we hear a lot of reviews about the changes going on in the different schools, and there are great ideas, and who doesn't think there's such great ideas, but as, as it's been for years and years, the proof is in the pudding, right? When tested, when evaluated, if our children are doing better, then we're doing our job. That's our responsibility. It's not something that, that is a nice thing to do, it's something that we absolutely need to do. I'd like to congratulate you and your teams, both on the high school level, the level, the middle school level, and obviously in our elementary schools, for continuing to move the system along and move this district along. We're off to a good start. We still have a way to go, all right? But hopefully, together, we're going to get there, and our children are getting, going to get the best education that money can buy.
That we're, it's the start. We're at the start, but the good news is, it looks like we're moving in the right direction. And I do, I know you do all the time, but the teachers have taken on a great deal. I think the, the proof of their work, the evidence of their work is just starting to come through.
Well, you're all to be commended.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Go home, get some rest.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rogers?
You and the school board you presently have, and I suppose prior ones, staff have always, always kept the education of our children in this town of party. You've been very consistent, and what you're doing now is just a part and parcel of what we've seen. So thank you for your hard work and your efforts, and I'm sure things are going to work out fine. Thank you.
Russ, and my, this is my final comment, as it comes to my head, you know, you and I have had many conversations with the boards, and I have to say, growing up in Nutley, you know, it was always good that, and it was always the perception that Nutley school systems were so good, and obviously, that drove our house market. And I've learned a lot, you know, through the roach exiting, and, you know, who do we want to attract to Nutley? And, you know, who, how are we going to attract, you know, the millennials? Because they seem to be the, you know, next generation. And when we were kids, growing up here, and our parents were buying homes here, the one thing that our parents didn't have in their hand was their iPhone. Now today, you know, I hear it all the time, you know, people go right on their phone, and there's your test scores, there's your ratings for the schools, and these are the things that I really am passionate for, and, you know, that we need to keep investing in our education system here in Nutley, and it has to, it has to keep improving, and I think we're on the right track, because today, it's not just word of mouth that brings families from the surrounding communities into Nutley, you know, to want to live in our town. Now it's, they go on their, they don't call the mayor's office or the Board of Ed, they go right on their phone, and all the information is at its fingertips. So I know that our board and myself are really committed to giving you the tools which you need to keep our school systems stellar and moving in the right direction, and the residents' reward for that will be higher house values, you know, and drive, and a driving market, because people want to live where the school systems are good.
The knowledge that you're providing the absolute best for me, as much as a school district, or as a community as a result of the school district, school district is direct correlated to the actual community it's in. Based in the heart of this community, as I've got to know it in the past four years, that's here, I really think's guys the limit, and at the end of the day, we're looking for big things. And I, the board, thank you very much for your cooperation and look forward to more.
Thank you so much for coming.
Have a good night.
Have a great night, Russ. Okay, with that being said, tonight's public hearing, this is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, number 3325, in ordinance of the township of Nutley, county, vast estate of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of land known as 307-309 Franklin Avenue, and also known as block 6001, lot 10, pursuant to the local on land and buildings law. I introduce this ordinance. I need a motion to open up the public portion of the meeting.
Over.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tutti?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Patako?
Aye. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on ordinance number 3325? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Donna Puntzer. I'm the property owner at 299 Franklin Avenue, three buildings down from Davis Building. I don't have an issue or any concerns regarding the school expansion. Wonderful, and I'm glad the superintendent spoke so well and enlightened us all of the need for the expansion. My concern is the timeframe and the deadline of actual construction, of what is planned that property, how long the Board of Ed is going to wait to do it, and how are they going to delineate the actual Board of Ed property versus the other properties that are joined that parking lot? Right now, there is a big concern of the property owners there because of the high traffic area. Every single day, there are cars in and out of the, the private property that we have, already thinking that it's Board of Ed property. What's going to be done to distinguish that between our private property versus the Board of Ed? And in addition to that, my other concern is this, that whole corner, that whole area is a gridlock, starting at 2:30. If I don't get to my office at 2:30 to start at 3:00, I can't get through. With the increase in students there, if you're moving sixth graders there, what's the proposed pickup and drop-off areas? Has that been, has that been worked on? And will these plans be available to the property owners and the neighbors in that area?
I, I think, doctor, that this is a, a work in progress. This is the first step in buying the piece of property. We have looked at very preliminary plans, but I think it would be a team effort, you know, on our part, the Board of Ed's part, and your part, to get together with these concerns, and that when these blueprints become official documents, that we could work together to make sure that we don't impose on your practice, and that, you know, the best end result can be attained for, for everyone.
Well, I should hope that before the blueprints become fact, that.
No, 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 not before. I'm saying, if, you know, if you give me what your concerns are, as we go through that process, you know, I would raise those questions, or even, really, I mean, I would do that, but also, it's really the Board of Ed, too, that I know that you would want to talk to them as the process is going on, so it's not too late, you know, to, to address.
Fair, fair enough.
May, may I interrupt one second? I'll call her Donna.
Go ahead. It's fine.
Donna, the other thing is, it has to be approvals through. Fire department, lot of review.
Okay, that, I wasn't aware of that, because there's been, and that's why I'm here tonight, because I don't really go by rumor, I go by fact.
It's all rumors, because we would know.
Exactly. So that's why I'm asking what, you know, if there in fact is a plan. I know I would, and I know would as well. I don't know who else is here, but I, I think that would just be right, that, that we do know what's going on, what the intentions are, and, and what will happen back to that property.
I think there'll be a referendum, too, and that will have. I think there'll be many, many public input.
Fair enough.
Donna, this is just the very, very first step. There is no plan that's cast in concrete at this point. The demographer has provided the board, and they've shared that with us as to what they need.
And that's all well and good.
But ultimately, what the solution will address that need, we're nowhere near there.
Okay, that's, you know, it's the first step, but I want to be part of that first step.
You absolutely need to be part of that process, as well as everyone else.
Yep.
This will be a transparent process, all right? Everyone will be informed every step of the way, and we will make this decision together.
And Donna, just so, you know, I wrote down your concerns. It's delineating private versus school, private property versus school property. How do you determine right-of-way and access, understanding that? Also, the nature of drop, pickup and drop-off areas designated because of the grid. I heard all, all of those. And you being, property being on the end of Church Street, and the right-of-way that goes across the back, I appreciate your concern about the heavy flow of traffic. And I also think, also as well as, you've been very patient, and you're tolerant of the fact that, you know, the kids like to sit on your steps, they like to sit in your yard, they, sometimes they don't clean up, and I appreciate your patience and understanding, but I think all of your points are really important for the board to understand and the planners to understand, and what we, what we are at, and it's just echoing, we're just on a very early stage, but we'll make sure that your voice is heard, as well as other, the other owners that are, that are there as well, need to be heard.
Fine, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Donna. Is there anyone else here that would like to comment on ordinance number 3325?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. I was at a Board of Ed meeting where there was, actually, DeCaro, I believe, is the Board of Ed's architect, and they do have three building plan schemes that have been looked at by a committee that were discussed at a Board of Ed meeting. So maybe, Donna, you could ask one of the Board of Ed members if they could let you look at the plans that have been prepared. And there was a committee that has been reviewing those three architectural renderings that do consist of 21 classrooms and a walkway. So there are three different plans that have been prepared for the school board that you may want to look at as well, okay? It was referenced that there were two individuals who reviewed the appraisals. Is it public knowledge who those two individuals who reviewed the appraisals?
Counsel, we have their name.
Yes, now that the need for.
Okay, and who are they?
Apologize, but the name.
So Ray McCarthy was one of the reviewers, and someone else who we don't know their name. And who was the appraiser?
Mark Hendricks.
Mark Hendricks, did it?
Mark Hendricks, the same Mark Hendricks who does the appraisals in town for assisting Mr. Labreezy, our contract appraiser, correct? Okay. And what was the appraisal? At or above? And so what was the appraisal price? Oh, we're just on the Davis property. Isn't this, is this the Davis property public hearing?
Yes.
905, I'm sorry, 905.
Did it praise for 905?
Yes.
And what is our purchase price?
900 less what they call a realty transfer fee. We're still going to fine-tune it, but the, right now, the number's 891,000 and change.
891,000. And who is the broker? No broker, so there'll be no broker fees, no commissions. This is direct with.
Correct.
The owner? And the owner of the property is, oh, okay, because there was another name in the record, some kind of LLC? Okay, so it is a business entity. Okay, all right, thanks. And the other thing is, the tenants that are currently there, what is the total monthly rent that will be collected by the township of Nutley from both the residential and the retail tenants?
Total for the site exclusive of $1,000 a year.
$84,000 a year, and that's for how many apartments?
Two apartments and one commercial unit.
Two apartment and the bike, two apartments and one commercial unit is going to generate $84,000?
Yeah, I'm sorry, four apartments. Four apartments.
Okay, four apartments, one commercial unit, $84,000. And who will get the rent from the bike shop? Mr. Davis owns the bike shop?
Yes, he does, but the, we, the town will purchase it, and then the revenues, those revenues will transition and be paid to the township.
Okay.
Go in the general revenue fund.
Okay, so we're purchasing a building for $891,000 that's going to generate $84,000 a year in revenue. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to comment on ordinance number 3325? Anyone? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Need a second?
Excuse me, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Neil Henning, 31 Terrace Avenue, Nutley. First, I want to congratulate the commissioners on the managing of the town's debt, very low, and obviously, we like that, because it gives us flexibility should there be type of emergency. Like you said, opportunities come up, you take advantage of them. There was an opportunity, though, before, on 184 Franklin Ave. Was that something that we ever looked at?
The 184, what's 184?
That is the new Mecca building that used to be the, next to the pizzeria there.
We did not look at that property, it was pre-sold.
What do you mean, pre-sold? It was up for sale for longer than these two properties.
Yes, and we didn't look at it at that time, and when we.
Doesn't that side of town need more parking than the side that we're looking at?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Okay, so that's a property that we never, what, what was the impetus to look at these properties as opposed to not looking at that one?
The first stage was for us to be involved was we're actually working with the school board to look at the necessary expansion of the infrastructure, so that, that actually started that, and then the next step happened to be becoming aware of the immediate sale, the imminent sale of the Chicolini property.
The addition that's going to be going on to this Davis property, does the, does the, do the commissioners have any idea what the referendum amount will be for that?
Not yet.
Plans aren't even finalized yet. So the board, the board wouldn't, let me, let me finish my statement. The board wouldn't be able to move forward with any plans, all right, until they control the property. So we're just at the very early stages of purchasing the property, but the township is purchasing the property. So obviously, there would have to be an agreement between the township and the board as to control of the property, and obviously, there needs to be a lot of discussion going on, all right? Despite what plans may be available now and what has been discussed to date, that, that plan may be enlarged. It may encompass more properties, all right? Because the one, the one thing we don't want to do is make mistakes that have been made in the past, and I'll give you a prime example. Montclair Radiology, wonderful business, all right? But if that was still a train station, all right, our property values would be even better than what they are today. than what they are today. Look at some of the more successful townships and there's a rail line there. So what we don't want to do is miss an opportunity and be shortsighted. So that's why we're taking the actions that we are now. And again, these are not actions that are taken lightly. I mean, we've, we've thought about this, we've deliberated over this for, for many, many months, all right? And what ultimately goes there is not only going to meet the needs of today, but then the needs moving into the future. Because again, we don't want to be short-sighted and just satisfy today's need.
Understood. So with that being said then, is it fair to say that the Board of Ed will have the full support of all the commissioners for the referendum and will, all the commissioners will help to work to get that passed?
I think that depends on what exactly it is and what they're putting out. What it encompasses, how it helps us, how it helps our, our students and what it looks like for the future of Nutley before we could just say yes or no to anything. I mean, once we get plans and see what the whole package is trying to deliver, it's hard to make a decision on what we're going to do.
So what do we buy in the building for then?
We're buying the building for an opportunity to correct the problems that are in the school system.
So we're letting the school, we are working, the, the school's working with that and they're putting together the project. So I'm, I'm missing the part where they would, that you would have, that you would have given them the support. If you're, you're supporting by buying the property, why wouldn't you support them to pass the referendum?
Neil, the way I would characterize it, right, and I don't want to speak for the board, but, but it would be my position is we are purchasing this with the intent that once they complete their planning, planning process, once they sit down and go through that planning process with the Board of Commissioners, we will achieve a point where we will all stand together and support the, the need for the expansion of schools. It's absolutely necessary that we come up with the right plan to expand the schools. It's necessary. So the simple fact is, let's get to the right plan and if we, and once we do that, this board, I believe, will stand together, I know I will, and, and I will commit to that. But my expectation is, is that I want to see that plan and I want to go over it and I want to understand it fully. And, and as Commissioner Tucci said, we're on the early side of that. So you're asking an end game question and I'm not there yet, but
Yeah, I mean, it just seems kind of, it seems kind of strange that we're, you said it's the end game, but we're buying a piece of land that is part of that first step. So it's not really the end game if you're already purchasing it for that purpose.
The, the purpose right now is, we could, we could have sat back as a board and simply said, guys, figure it out, buy the property you need to buy, and that would be a missed opportunity and we didn't want that to happen.
Since when did, when does the town get into the landlord business? That's not what we're, that's not why we bought the property, we didn't buy it for the eighty-four thousand dollars worth of revenue.
Absolutely, we're not in the landlord business, we're not going to, but we're not going to lose the revenue and we're, until the plan is
I understand, but I'm saying, like
Then why say that?
It was for the, because you're saying we're kind of getting, giving the horse before, and that's not the case.
Step one, we're not getting before anything, it's just step one.
Step one, to get the, to get the addition on the middle school. Right. So that's why I don't understand why, what the hesitation would be on the referendum piece.
The hesitation
A referendum's going to be going out.
The hesitation, I think, is pretty obvious, okay? Number one, we need to assess what the physical impact will be on that area and everyone in that area, and we also need to assess what the financial impact will be, depending on what the tax climate is and what the, what the climate in the economy is and how well the economy is or isn't doing.
Fine.
And we, and we don't know what that referendum's going to encompass. It's going to encompass the middle schools, it's going to encompass some of the elementary schools and the high school, we have no idea what it's going to encompass. They ask us to, are you going to support the referendum? No. In concept, we support buying the property to, to address the problems at the elementary school and, and bring the sixth grade to the middle school. That's the concept.
Now, if the question is, do we support education in Nutley, the answer is absolutely.
Obviously.
All right?
Obviously.
Not having all that other information, it would be premature and quite frankly, irresponsible for us to say whether or not we support something that we don't know what the elements of it are.
So where we're going with this is, we're, we're just going to be landlords picking up the eighty-four grand until such time as they come up with something that everybody agrees with.
Well, we're looking to
Could be two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years from now.
You know, Neil, I think it's like the chicken and the egg, it's like what comes first, right? So if we missed the opportunity to buy the property and that property, I believe had interesting parties on it, Commissioner Evans?
I, I get it, I get it.
So it's, at a certain point, you have to jump.
I get it, and then getting the eighty-four grand that covers the nut anyhow.
But let me, but let me just say my part, Neil. My, my, excuse me, Commissioner Evans. My, my part is, is this, we are going to, we are going to take a look at what the Board of Education comes back with us, you know, and hopefully, we're going to get together. But like any, any real estate investment, we have something solid. It's not like we're going down to Atlantic City with our money and throwing it on black. We could always regroup, if we, for some reason, we can't get together with the Board of Education, which I know that we will, but, but we still have a valuable piece of property that if we would have to sell it, we can.
And whose department's going to be in charge of that maintenance on that property now?
Well, Parks and Rec will be in charge of maintenance.
Actually, Parks and Public Property, yes. And in the interim, the eighty-four thousand that will be revenue coming into the town will help offset
Of course.
the debt service. So it's, it's pretty much a no-brainer. I mean, it's not, it's not that we're getting into the real estate business, we're going to be buying up properties around town just to collect, you know, prints.
That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to understand, because that's what it's starting to sound like, so that's why I want to see if we actually have
Neil, you're a smart guy and that's a legitimate question.
I'm trying to understand which properties are viable and which ones aren't.
Yeah, so
And where are other
Neil, to your point, as I said, it's simply, it's a first step. I, I'm not aware of any intention on the part of the school board to wait five, 10 years to figure out what they want to do. They're actively working on plans. We have to sit down and go through those as a next step. We've purchased a valuable asset. The asset has a revenue stream, it's associated with that. Commissioner Tucci's department will maintain the asset, my department will collect the money on the asset, right, and will make sure that it's available for the benefit of the town. We do expect that, that whatever they're going to come forth in a referendum will be a referendum that addresses the needs of our schools. And that for, I would like to achieve a point that finally, we stop talking about the needs of our schools. We just heard tonight, academically, we're on the right path, we're now going to address the infrastructure, and I'd like to get to a point where we said we've done the right things, we can look back on it and say we've done the right things, our children are excelling, our values of our homes are going up, people still think Nutley is a desirable place. That's the direction where we want to go.
I'd like to see us get that direction as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Oh, okay, yes, sir, your name and address for the record.
Vince Licarcio, 14 Coiman Avenue, sorry. Just want to take the moment to encourage you guys to keep looking forward, keep planning for the forward. To me, this is an investment in our community. To me, the Board of Ed, commissioners, we're all on the same team, okay? We're in this together, keep doing the job you're doing, it's great. I, I encourage, I would have paid more money for that property, but that's me, so I just want to thank you for your job, work and just keep looking forward. Let's not, let's not be reactive like a lot of times we are in the past, let's keep reactive. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Vinnie, Vinnie, before you go. I'd like to seize opportunities. I want to thank you for something. I may have mentioned this to you before, but it's something that I know all of us
Free turkey?
No, no, not a free turkey. You've got, you've got
I need a 23-pounder.
You've got a sign. Shoprite, that's been there a long time. People take note of it. Neighborhood. You've kept the flavor of Nutley, the character of Nutley. Done it in word indeed, but I just want you to know how much that sign means to a lot of people in this town, because I do hear about it, and I'm sure, fellas, you've heard from time to time that you've really kept the character of this community as a neighborhood town. So I just want to take this time to thank you. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you for that, Steve.
Thank you. And I'd just like to comment, say one more comment before we close the public portion of the meeting. We are very committed, this Board of Commissioners and also the Board of Ed, is that, over the years, we've had the perception of the school system isn't what it used to be and they're slipping and, you know, people don't want to move into the town. We are very committed, and I know I am, that we're not going to watch the game get away from us, we are going to swing the bat up here. And hopefully, 50 years from now, when our kids are having their kids and our grandkids are here, we're going to have a town that everyone could be proud of and we're going to have an education system that is second to none. However, we don't have a crystal ball up here, but we're not going to say 50 years from now, this body, this governing body that's before us, you know what, they didn't do anything, they didn't take any chances. Alls they did was, you know, a and yay and no and yes. So I just want everybody to know that we are very committed to swinging the bat here and to make sure that our grandkids and our children and yours have the same opportunity that we all here in Nutley that are from here had the same chance to achieve our dreams and our goals. Any other commissioners? Any other comments, commissioners, I meant to say?
I don't think we need any more commissioners.
Thank you. I move to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye, I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye, thank you. Okay, ordinance number 3327, we are going to defer this to our next meeting, correct, counsel?
Yes, Mayor, we're going to defer, we're still negotiating on some items and it's a right, right time to just defer to the next meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci, we move on to resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Township Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to acquire specialized professional services for air conditioning, plumbing, heating and refrigeration service and purchase of equipment and supplies, and whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bids for air conditioning, plumbing, heating and refrigeration service and purchase of equipment and supplies, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex State and New Jersey, that sealed bids shall be due on Wednesday, December 16, 2015, at 3:00 PM, addressed to Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly opened and read. I move the resolution.
Begging.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas requests for qualifications for Township Forester were received and opened on September 23, 2015 by the Township Clerk, and whereas the most responsible and responsive request for qualifications was from Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linson, P.O., Box 6089, West Orange, New Jersey, and whereas Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linson, New Jersey, Certified Tree Expert, Number 9198, has provided these services in the past to the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service, and whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on September 1, 2015, and continued through August 31, 2016, and whereas the contract is not to exceed $22,000 and funds are available from account 5-01-512-200 in the amount of $5,006-01-512-200 in the amount of $17,000, funds having been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex State and New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linson, as described herein. The response to the request for qualification be placed on file with this resolution and notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Begging.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the request for qualifications for insurance, accident and safety review board meetings were received and opened on February 11, 2015 by the Township Clerk, and whereas Resolution Number 6615 stipulates that a contract shall be for one year, 12 months, January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2015, with an option for the township to extend for one year, and whereas Resolution 6615 has provided the one-year extension option, and the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley would like to utilize the one-year option of said contract, and whereas C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency, 410 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has provided these services in the past to the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service, and whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on January 1, 2016, continuing through December 31, 2016, whereas funds are available from account 6-516-245 in the amount of $10,000 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex State and New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency LLC, as described herein. The response to the request for qualifications shall be placed on file with this resolution and a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Begging.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
I will abstain, I do some business with Searle.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the local capital budget for the year 2015 was adopted on the second day of June 2015, whereas it is desired to amend said approved capital budget for the purchase of property, as noted as the Davis property, for $900,000 and the Chickolini property through $3,500,000. These are the, the gross amounts for bonding purposes, the actual purchases, as we discussed, are, are less than this. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley that the following amendments to the approved budget section be made and as stated, to include the 900,000 and the 3.5 million, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas local government units must prepare and submit a corrective active, action plan as part of the annual audit process in accordance with OMB Circular 133, A133 and 9801, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that the attached corrective action plan for the audit for the year 2014 is hereby approved, be it further resolved that a copy of this correction, corrective action plan is to be kept on file in the Township Clerk's office and one certified copy is to be submitted to the Director of the Division of Local Governmental Services, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State and New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges for Block 9701-95-C1308, for $825.44 for the year 2013, for Block 300, Lot 1, for $470,287.57, for Block 501-27, for $1,680.10, Block 400, Lot 9, for $16,739.20, for a total refund of $489,532.31, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. The, let's see, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, that the Treasurer B. N. Cheese is hereby authorized to cancel water charges in the amount of $129,298.97, for the following reasons, free to the accounts in five of the areas, a error in reading the meter, in one area, it's a billing error, and the other is it's a duplicate billing, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State and New Jersey, that in accordance with the provision of RS48:4-58, the following transfers of appropriations in the 2015 budget be, and the same are hereby authorized and approved, from tax assessor salary, salary and wage, $10,000, tax collector salary and wage, $30,000, municipal election, $60,000, social security, $40,000, unemployment comp, $49,000, to tax assessor ONE for $10,000, tax collector ONE for $10,000, clerk salary and wage for $8,000, DCRP $1,000, PERS, those are both in pension accounts for $10,000, and the capital improvement fund for $150,000, for a total transfers of $189,000, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Whereas bids for the 2014-2015 acceptance of recycling vegetative waste, to include leaf and grass clippings, were received and opened on November 12, 2014, whereas Esprit Tundis and Sons, P.O., Box 1407, Summit, New Jersey, was awarded a contract for the removal and recycling of Class B clean wood brush, an amount of $6 per cubic yard, for the removal and recycle of Class C leaves, in the amount of $7.95 per cubic yard, and for the removal and recycling of Class C grass clippings, in the amount of $13.95 per cubic yard. Whereas the terms of the contract shall be extended for an additional year from the extension award date, November 25, 2014, with the same price option, subject to availability of the funds in the subsequent annual budget, and whereas the funds are available in account number 50142209, an amount of $6,000, over account number 60142209, an amount of $55,000, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, in New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to Esprit Tundis and Sons not to exceed $61,000, and that the Mayor and Township Clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State and New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the Park Avenue Monopole CO, co-location lease, the Township of Nutley, received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in the Commission Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, December 16, 2015, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, which will they be opened and read? I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with provision RS48:4-58, the following transfers appropriation to 2015 budget be, and the same are hereby authorized and approved, sewer salary and wage, $10,000, to road repair, maintenance, other expenses, $10,000, from sewer, other expenses, $7,000, to parking lot salary wages, $7,000, for a grand total of $17,000, so move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
All right, Mayor. Thank you. Commissioner Rogers, do you, don't have anything this evening?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, I have one resolution, whereas NJSA 48:4-87 provides for the Director of Division of Local Services may approve the insertion of any special item in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made, available by law, and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget, whereas said Director may also approve the insertion of the item of appropriation for equal amount. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, hereby request that the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the year 2015 in the sum of $31,000, which is now available from the FEMA Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, the SAFER grant, in the amount of $31,000, be further resolved that the like sum of $50,000 be made, be and the same is hereby appropriated under the caption of General Appropriations, appropriations excluded from 5% caps, FEMA SAFER grant, $31,000, be further resolved that the above is the result of funds from the FEMA Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response SAFER grant in the amount of $31,000, be further resolved that the Township Clerk forward two certified copies of this resolution to the Director of Local Services. I move the resolution.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
That concludes our business portion of the meeting, is there anyone here that would like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive, I, at the last meeting, Commissioner Evans was not here, and Mayor, you asked me to wait and ask a question when Mr. Evans was here.
Sure.
Has tax assessor Labrizzi resigned, or has he given the township his intention to resign?
Mr. Labrizzi has, has actually resigned, and he is employed in another municipality, he's no longer with the township.
And who is acting as our tax assessor?
Sorry?
Who is our acting tax assessor?
George is covering, until we actually appoint a new tax assessor, which we're currently...
And will this be a full-time or a part-time tax assessor?
You know, it's an interesting question, I'm, given the size of the township, the number of line items, the annual permits, we could justify going full-time, but I actually am working on a part-time solution, I think it's time to give it a try.
And this part-time solution, has this position been advertised, or is it?
Yes.
It has?
Yes.
And what is the salary range?
Expected to be between $80,000 and $90,000.
$80,000 and $90,000, and what was the full-time salary range for Mr. Labrizzi?
It was currently $132,000, would have risen to $134,000, or change.
$134,000, okay, and $80,000 to $90,000 for part-time?
Correct, and we would also, carrying savings as well, because we would be subject to paying 60% pension and his healthcare, where today, we're, we're paying.
Okay, great, thank you, so he's no longer here, but he's being paid on an hourly basis, or?
Uh, right now, he's not being paid at all, we're just getting the coverage, it's part of the agreement.
Okay, great, thank you. Second question, someone asked me to ask this, who could not be here tonight, the transporting of PCBs and undisclosed cargo through Nutley residential neighborhoods resulted in four cubic yards of PCBs and lead being dumped in the residential area on the track as a result, as a result of a derailment this weekend, due to potentially unsafe tracks. How does the township intend to respond to roach regarding this, and also the citizens of Nutley?
We're gonna hold everybody accountable, and roach told us tonight that they were not gonna be shipping any dirt through the train at all, from this point on.
And how will the dirt be shipped?
By truck.
By truck, so they're gonna take it on our roads instead of on the railroad?
I think they're gonna go through the Clifton side, so it won't be on the Nutley side at all.
Okay, so why wasn't that the plan in the beginning?
I, I guess it was more affordable to do it by rail because of the volume of dirt, but that's a roach question.
And given this railroad is being used commercially, is, how is the township being compensated, if at all? Do we, do we receive tax revenue or something for this railroad, or this railroad just is used, obviously, this line makes money from roach for transporting contaminated soil, is there...
It's owned by Norfolk Southern.
Okay.
It's, it's a spur of Norfolk Southern, it was there to transport, I guess, medicines and different...
So, that actual property is not Nutley property, it's...
No, that's owned by Norfolk Southern, if it was Nutley property, we would try to reestablish the train station that we spoke about earlier.
Okay, all right, can we buy it from them?
We would, we would love to, but...
We seem to be buying property. While we're on the subject of buying things, it was two years ago, next month, that I first spoke at this microphone, and I've been attending lots of meetings, and I made the request several times that our mic system be improved. Tonight, there was a lot of in and out on the mic, which does not pick up when the minutes